Board members, can I ask you to please come to the table? Okay, we're now two minutes behind schedule, so board members, if you could...
We're two hours.
We're an hour and a half.
I know, but I said nine twenty and yeah.
No, an hour.
She is so funny. I'm only an hour.
One hour, one hour and twenty-two minutes.
But we had a robust discussion, and I'm sure we'll have another robust discussion on this next part of the agenda, which Ms. Palczek will be managing, and I will just be operating the clock. Ms. Palczek, it's all yours.
Thank you. Very generous. So we are here. I do want to remind us, it is about nine twenty. We do have a few members who are away tonight. And we do have made a commitment to vote on this before the end of the school year. And so the vote is currently scheduled for June 13th. And tonight, I think the goal will be to have Dr. Nixon and Mr. Drager briefly review with us the results of the survey that went out to employees and families. And then for us to have a discussion with the hope of honing in on one of the two versions. And in our conversation, you know, I will also ask folks to provide specific balanced changes or tweaks that they would like to see to their preferred version. So I think we'll start with brief presentation and then try to open it up and hopefully, you know, limit our discussion to the time that will allow us to be fruitful and then figure out what our next steps will be. So please take it away and please let me know if anyone would like to speak.
Sure. So I would like to start off with just some kind of high-level data points, just to kind of get us in tune with some of the responses from the survey. So in terms of the employees, we had 14,713 employees complete the survey. That was about a 53% response rate. And in terms of parents and families, we had 33,682 completed responses. That was roughly a 19% response rate because we did send out to parents 176,025 invitations. So Mr. Drager will walk us through some of the kind of high-level points, especially around the various questions. And this evening, depending on what the feedback is or what other considerations we can take back and make tweaks so that before you have the final vote, if there's another iteration that you would like to see, we just have some time to make those changes on the calendar's version one or two.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
On the number of people that you sent it to?
Yes.
Is that multiple parents of the same child, or was it limited to one response per IP address?
No, it was multiple parents. And if they requested it, sometimes they might not be listed too. If anyone reached out and requested, we would go ahead and send them a link as well. All right, so looking at the survey, it followed kind of a similar format to the survey that was done last year with families and employees. The first question we asked about preference around school year beginning, either one week before Labor Day, two weeks before Labor Day. And what we saw was 50% of respondents overall between employees and families prefer beginning one week before Labor Day. This is interesting when you kind of look at the backend of the survey, which we'll get to in a moment. What we also asked next was preferences around the end of the school year. In terms of the different weeks in June there of when school year could end, 36% and 38% respectively were for the first week and second week of June between families and employees. And then as we asked questions about winter break, spring break, and some of the holidays, the trends we saw in the survey responses is really overwhelming support for the two-week winter break. Behind that, I would say, followed was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving was very popular with families and employees. And then we also asked about the preference of spring break and kind of it being that floating week that kind of varies anywhere between March and April to being more of a fixed week between kind of the, in the third or fourth quarter there, or in the third quarter. And people kind of wanted to prefer to stick with the current practice of it moving between March and April. On page four, we go down a bit, we added a new question this round that kind of looked at all of the items in the survey and asked respondents to pick their top two. You know, so you can want to start later, end sooner, and have all the holidays in between. We kind of forced them to see, okay, out of everything that you could be considering, what is most important to you? And what we saw for the combined responses is that, again, overwhelmingly, winter break was the top response with 49%, followed by beginning one week before Labor Day with 24%, and ending school the first week of June with 23%. Employees and families, again, both top choice was two-week winter break. Employees also wanted to end school the first week of June with 28% as their second choice, and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a student holiday as their third choice with 25%. And for families, their top choices, the next top choice was beginning one week before Labor Day at 25%, with ending school the first week of June, and Wednesday before Thanksgiving being off, both with 21%. And then the final question of the survey was asking, between the two versions that we had posted and narrowed down to at the last work session, asking respondents, what was their preference between version one and version two? And surprisingly, even though most said earlier in the survey that they favored one week before Labor Day start, many, once they saw the calendar and saw kind of the intricacies of the calendar, I think, then selected, were selecting version one. 51% overall, version one versus version two at 35%. And that was 61% of employees choosing version one or preferring version one, and 46% of families preferring version one to version two. Yeah. The actual calendar, so there should be two other documents there.
Yep.
Start with one, I guess.
Thank you. Michael, did you want to review anything on that, or are you ready to?
No, that's it. So I'll turn it back to the board, see what questions you have, or what discussion you want to do in terms of hopefully narrowing down to one and seeing what we want to tweak with that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you both so much. I know this has been a quite involved process, and appreciate your work on this. So so far, I have Iljaung and then Pat.
Okay. Mr. Drager? How good to call you Mr. Drager. Is, you know, people may think that there is some, somewhat, what you call it? That the survey responses to version one versus version two versus answering some other choices might be conflicting with each other, but I don't necessarily see it that way. You know, for example, you know, 50% of responses might have indicated beginning, wanting before Labor Day. But if you also look at responses for ending in June, if you add 36% plus 38%, that's 74% of the people wanting basically before the end of the second week, June. So there were more people wanting that to be end before the end of the second week in June versus wanting to start later.
Right.
In August. So when they saw version one and version two, because basically that's what it is, that's what it is, they went for version one. So I'm going to ask you some other questions, but you know, my suggestion to my colleagues will be, we start with basically version one and then tweak, make some tweaks based upon survey responses. That would be my advocacy. I have a question regarding that teacher, what, two full days of teacher planning, work days, right? Teacher's work days, school planning. 53% of people wanting that to be two full days as opposed to breaking it up to five different days. If we did two full days, making those days student holidays, do we then have to add two more days?
You do to the student, or I'm sorry, to the teacher contract length. So either you'd have to pull the days from existing days on the counter, these pink days that are staff development.
Okay, I think I might have asked you this question, not in the right way. Right now, if we did five days, like all the releases, we have 180 days for student school days.
Correct.
180 days. Those includes those partial days.
Correct.
Correct? But if we do make two of those five days student holidays, then we're going to have to find two more days somewhere for student school days.
Correct.
That will make either school year go later, or have to start all year, or have to cut out a couple of days from student holidays.
Right. You'd have to extend the year or change it out for another day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Moon, if you have a go back and have any recommendations for tweaks, please let us know.
Okay, I will do.
Thank you. I have Pat, Elizabeth, and then Megan.
Yeah, thank you. I just had one question about the survey. We asked the question whether people would like the school year to end the first week of June. Is there any scenario in which that could happen?
Not yet unless you start earlier or reduce holidays somewhere else, you know, holiday breaks or holidays within the year.
Isn't it true, Mr. Drager though, and Dr. Nixon, we had a version three that did end the first week of June, and the board chose to remove that version from the versions to put on the survey?
Okay.
So I think that's why we kept the master draft.
It cut the winter break. It cut the winter break and took away the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you. Elizabeth and then Megan.
So if I had written the survey, I probably would have made it a little bit more straightforward. I felt it was wordy, but I provided that feedback at the time. That said, 19%, that's actually, in surve land, that's actually kind of high. So we got, I think, a decent return. When I look at these responses, of course, I'm very pleased to see we already have President's Day off, so that's 61% want no school. We already have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off, that's 66%. And the very next thing is Veterans Day. And so, of course, I would like to see a tweak that includes Veterans Day once and for all. I think we're overdue for addressing it. We have the ability to find the path, so I would like us to consider that. The other thing, is there any way you can make this bigger just for a moment? So just go, yeah, go down to the plus sign down at the bottom, a little bit bigger, and then slide it up. So the thing that I'm going to call my colleagues' attention to that I did previously is in the bottom right block are the disparate number of days for quarters. And I still maintain that that's a problem. That is very difficult on students to have, you know, to go from a 40-day long quarter to a 50-day long quarter. And it may not seem like much, but it's really hard. One of the things, Dr. Braybrand, that I've asked previously, and I think I would like us to work on for next year, is producing not only discipline data, but also whatever other data we have related to, you know, stress events, suicide attempts, et cetera, around when they happen in a calendar. Because I have a significantly, I think, valid hypothesis that we couldn't predict when those events happen, because I think they happen, you know, related to quarter ends, either just before or just after, and that, or related to breaks, and that we can start to anticipate. If we build into a calendar already something that we know is harder for students, I think we're going to, we're not putting student interest first. So I don't think it's that hard for us to move a quarter. I don't know what went into dividing these quarters, but this is something that specifically, if we go with this calendar, I would like us to fix that. Because I think that our whole goal is not the convenience of adults, but it is supposed to be for student achievement. And I think that bottom box does not put student achievement first.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And I appreciate your share. I want to go back, I forgot to thank Mr. Moon for sharing your leaning toward one versus the other. I forgot to remind my other two colleagues. So if you do have an input, we are at the point where knowing which way we're going would be helpful, and thank you all for sharing your suggested tweaks as well. So I just have Megan. Is there anyone else who'd like to go after Megan at this point?
Okay, thank you. Dr. Braybrand, did you want to say something first?
Just back on Elizabeth, one thing I'd like, Ms. Schultz, one thing I'd like to pull data on, two things I'd like to pull data on, and maybe Mr. Drager already knows. One, I think a lot of our snow days happened between the 15th of January and that March timeframe, so we have interrupted dates. It depends, I know, depending on the weather, whether it's a snowy December or not. And the other is, we've tended to end that quarter around that time because of inauguration and Martin Luther King is already time when we break, at least in this year, because we have the inauguration day we've done for like 35 years and the Martin Luther King. So that's part of why I think we've made that the quarter end date. It does, I totally get where you're coming from, so I completely agree with your analysis. I think that's why we've made that the default over time. Is that right, Mr. Drager?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm pretty sure the data would show that February, March are highest snow days. We were kind of, felt locked in a little bit where that, with inauguration day, where that second quarter ended. I will say for the third quarter and fourth quarter transition, I think we could easily move that to before spring break, and that would provide a better balance for those last two quarters.
Thank you. Good input. Megan?
Thank you. I know it's a late hour, so we're, you know, maybe not going to be able to go as deep as I wish we could to help both Ms. Palczek, who helped, led the calendar committee, and Mr. Drager, and Helen for the work you're doing. So, you know, maybe we'll have to figure out another way, another time to have that conversation, because some of this is excellent. There's toward the back, I'll just spotlight on page four where it was from the full list of calendar preferences below, select two items you consider the most important. I don't know that I necessarily like that structure there. I just, I think you're asking people to artificially just pick two out of the complexity, and it's not as meaningful to me as a decision maker. But I do want to say that overall, I'm thrilled at the response rate. I think it's fantastic. I very much appreciate that we've broken out the data for us as board members to make this decision. I think it's one of the best collective, yes, Scott, a glow to you and your team and to Helen, to the team. So where I am on this, I think that the data should hopefully lead this board, that there is not support, almost two to one, sometimes three to one, to start two weeks before Labor Day. It's just to me, I don't care what version one or two you want, I will not put my hand up for anything that starts us any more than a week before. I hear it from my community, and it's supported in the survey. In terms of the winter break, it's very reassuring to know that the strength of support is there. I also want to echo what Ms. Schultz has said, and she and I and a few others have been lobbying this for years, but you will see Veterans Day having no school is still leading. And in our employees, it's a two to one, saying no school versus a full day. And on the family data, it's kind of a mix in what, you know, the school day or no. But our employees, interestingly, where they are on that. But combined data, you're still seeing more people want that. I also found it very interesting, when they rank order observing holidays on page three, you'll see that Veterans Day in the combined data ranked second out of our five. So I will also say to everyone that I've already said before, I do not support inauguration day being a holiday. I think it messes up with our calendar. It happens once every four years. We live not just 13 miles away from the nation's capital, but by traffic wise, it's an hour. It is not going to impact our traffic patterns. I don't hear from my families that they're all trekking down to that craziness of even trying to reach the capital for it. So I think we need to stop doing something that I think most families are basically saying, no, it's not needed. So to versions, it's in the survey, yeah. It's in the data.
So Ms. McLaughlin.
So versions one and two, I don't really like either one clear out by itself. So I heard what Mr. Moon was saying. Did you say version one or two you liked? Well, whatever has a starting one week before is, to me, the starting point. And then the other thing is...
The version two, yes.
So version two, however, I want to wipe out the inauguration day, because it is not acceptable to have our families come back for, the final day of school be Monday, June 21st. We have heard from families and employees, do not wrap that around. So we're going to need to finish by June 18th. I don't care how we accomplish it, but that to me is paramount.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Tammy and then Karen Keisgamar.
I think the response rate is about average. I don't think it's stellar. I mean, it could be up to 30% for an internal audience, which is, this is an internal audience. That's, you know, I don't know, like, what has it been in the past? Do we know? I mean, it's okay response rate, but it's not stellar.
We can check on that. I don't have it in front of me right now.
I'm talking about an internal audience where basically, you know, staff and parents, it hasn't gone out to the community. So in an internal audience survey like that, you know, 30%. I understand. It's in our internal audience. So I would support version two because I do believe, in what I'm hearing from my community and the data supporting, that I don't really think people, I don't know. I don't know how you came to the different data points. I don't know how you said you want to start only a week before and then you support version one. I don't know how that exactly happened. So I don't have strong feelings on a lot of the other things, except I do, because Ms. McLaughlin has such strong feelings, I absolutely just as strongly support having off on inauguration day. My community lives 15 minutes from DC. I know a lot of people who go there. I know, and you talk about hands-on experiential learning. We live 15 minutes from where our leader is being, you know, installed. I, you know, a lot of people I know take their kids down, do that. Maybe it's my proximity, because like I said, it takes 15 minutes to get down to DC from where I live. So that's kind of my comments right now.
Thank you, Tammy. All right. Madam Chair, would you like to share any comments?
I think Ms. Keisgamar.
I don't know.
I guess I'll get in the queue. I do worry about starting two weeks before. I would be more comfortable with version two. I do think that the, Ms. Schultz, you raise a very important question about the balance of the quarters, and so I would suggest that what we could possibly do is move out the end of the first quarter into the first week of November by a couple of days, you could even do it three days. And then, I don't know, but I would be interested in hearing from staff whether or not we could move the professional development and teacher work days out into that second week so that it would allow for the holiday for Veterans Day. That would bring us to the first quarter being... Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. How could I forget that? So if we were to... It is tricky, but I do think extending the first quarter by a few days is a good idea. And shrinking the second quarter is something that we should look to balance out. And version two does have us ending school on the 21st, and I guess my question is, if we look at some of the other options, if we can pull one extra holiday somewhere and that gets us to end school on the 18th, I think that would be a good idea.
Do you have a recommendation?
I will find a holiday and get back to you.
Thank you. We definitely need, need some solutions with some of these challenges, so thank you. Karen Keisgamar, you? I know it's...
Well, I'll just give you my preferences, and we can fight over the other stuff later. But I think the one week before, starting no earlier than one week before is probably, although I know that there are other jurisdictions not far away that start two weeks before and end earlier. I do want, I would like to see Veterans Day off. With respect to the voting days, inauguration, it's, in the data, it looks like it's important, at least to employees. So, you know, I don't have the strong feelings that Ms. McLaughlin has. And my other concern is just not, I don't want to end beyond that second week in June. Those are, I'm probably more flexible than me.
Do you have a recommendation of how we start on this one, one week before and end two weeks? Is there a place you'd be comfortable cutting, adding days or cutting holidays during the year? This is, I know it's a very challenging calendar, so feel free to think about it for a go-back. Okay, thank you. I know, and I appreciate my colleagues. As you can tell, this has been probably one of the most challenging calendars because of all of the requirements and the very late Labor Day starts. So I think I have a couple of, okay, so I have Ryan and then a couple of go-backs.
A quick question. If we were to do a half-day Wednesday before Thanksgiving, that would get us to, that would count as a day?
Yes, I think as long as the students are having lunch in school, it's a day.
Okay. And I would advocate for that and what KKG said next to me.
So it's still ending three weeks. You would like to advocate doing a half-day before Thanksgiving, but not having school on June 21st on version two. So we still have three weeks in June. I'm just trying. The three weeks in June. Right, right, right. Okay. I just, yeah, I want us to be clear that, right, version two means that we have three weeks in June, maybe almost three weeks. Okay, thank you. So then I have Elizabeth and then Megan for go-backs.
If we could go back to calendar one, I want to emphasize what Iljaung said about the survey on ending, on what, on when people want to end, and the combination of, okay, now where is it? So 36% want to end in the first week of June, 38% want to end in the second week of June, which would be inclusive of the 36%, because 36% have already said, hey, look, I already want to end. So we're at, that's 74% of people want to end in either the first or second week of June. So while you may look at, oh, well, I don't want to start early, they sure as heck want to end early. And that's, that's the real issue, is that when it comes down to brass tacks, basically, when I look at the other one, ending the 21st of June, which is a Monday, coming back, first of all, no one's going to be here. And actually, I thought we couldn't structure a calendar that had fewer than three days. I thought in a week. I thought I had heard that in the past, that you cannot architect a calendar that has fewer than two days, because that, you're begging for an issue. So I don't know. But on this calendar, if people will work with me, from what I've heard from others, I, I'm sorry, I tend to agree with Ms. McLaughlin. If people want to take off veteran, I mean, off inauguration day, take it off. Take it off. Take it off. You know, it's one day in the year, and if you feel like you're going to have an experiential learning time with your children, go right ahead. But I would say my solution would be... But I would say, my solution would be move the January 20th to Veterans Day. And I would move the third quarter end, if you see on the right there in the April box, it's currently listed as Friday, April 9th. I would move it back five days to March 28th, Friday, April, March 28th. And then, have the week after spring break, I'd move back the teacher workday, which will actually be nice, because you'll actually get a little extra bonus in the spring break, and have the Monday, April 5th be the teacher workday that's in concert with the quarter end on March 28th.
Do you mean Friday, March 26th for the quarter end?
I'm sorry, 26th. Sorry, can't see here. So, that would turn- that would- you would have a quarter situation that would be 47. You'd have a short quarter for second quarter, which isn't a bad idea, and then 45 and 48. So, 47, 40, 45, 48. It's not perfect, but it's better than that, I think, unless somebody has a better idea. But I think that balances the quarters a little bit better. I think we don't have that long stretch in January where- Dr. Brabran, thank you for pointing out, we're likely to have some snow days anyway. So, if you already build in four holidays in January, plus snow, that's a little bit of a- I don't know. I think that's not a great plan. So, I'd give back President's Day. Not President's Day, inauguration.
Thank you. Thank you very much for giving very specific suggestions. I appreciate that. And I have Megan for a go-back.
I did. You know, I wanted to, first of all, emphasize for anyone who, and to counter what Ms. Schultz was saying specifically, we are faced a little bit with, you give everybody a singular question in isolation, and yes, what you're seeing is people want to have their cake and eat it too. So, in terms of this, where we are, this is an unusual calendar, and that Labor Day is starting particularly late, and that's creating a problem. But we're trying to get consistency for our families. And it is very clear what people are saying, not just by the families, but especially our employees, on when do you start? And I want to draw everybody's attention that if we want to start two weeks before Labor Day, the teachers start August 10th. They basically get the first week in August off, and I say this over and over again with the feedback we get from families and our employees. We live in our nation's capital. The school board, the board supervisors, everyone goes on August recess for a multitude of reasons. It is not okay to tell our employees, hey, come show up the second week in August. It's just not. So, I feel that we're looking at the data. I know some people are saying, who has strong feelings? I'm just going to tell you, it's- I'm not coming at this with strong feelings. I'm trying to use a really good survey to say, what are our employees and our families telling us? And if people want to go toe-to-toe on what the percentage responses are, that's how we have a data-informed conversation with one another. But I really don't want us characterizing who's got strong feelings one way or the other, because I can tell you from my standpoint, it's not my strong feelings. I'm looking at this. And that's why we asked the families to tell us, and we asked our employees to tell us, what are important to you? And yes, we're going to have to wrestle with some of this. What I don't understand is, we've got seven teacher workdays and professional development days, and I'm hearing from families as well about childcare needs, that they don't see this happening in other school divisions. So, I would like to have, whether it's tonight or it's some other point before we go to vote on this, where's the benchmarking that says, are Arlington, Prince William, and Loudoun County, just to take Virginia schools alone, having all of these disruptive learning days of teacher workdays and professional development days? You know, and is that what creates the challenge for us of ending as late as we are?
Well, here's something for the board to think about. Well, there are a couple of things, but I think I'll stay focused on this, because that's what you brought up. Our teachers are crying out for more professional development.
Wait, Scott, I have to stop you. I am not saying eliminate them, Scott. No, because it's- you're going to- I'm not saying to eliminate them.
Ms. McLaughlin, if you could just let Dr. Brabran finish, and then we can have a respectful discourse. Dr. Brabran.
So, and I think even more so since, for at least our elementary teachers, the full-day money went away, and where do I get that same opportunity? I think the reality is this that we have to think about, or the board has to think about, is you all approve a calendar, not the superintendent. I recognize that. You can either embed it throughout the year, and training is a weak link in Fairfax County. We have to do it better. That's what all these advisory committees have just said this week. We need to actually do more training, not less. Or, we're going to have teachers back at, not August 10th, we're going to have them back August 1st, and the first two or three weeks of August will become training weeks to prepare for the school year. You're going to either do it in August or in June, and, you know, my gut is, teachers, by a certain time in June, are ready to get out, and it'd be easier to pull them back. But I do believe the power of PD has to come somewhere in our calendars of the future. And a lot of other districts don't do it, but frankly, that's- we need to lead in this. And if you study other countries, Europe, Asia, teachers have many more professional development days than what we have now. They're in school more, they're paid for longer days. We've got to figure it out. So, it's embedded throughout, or we bump up more of those PD days that we've started in August now about a week and make it two weeks.
Scott, I'm just clarifying. I asked what other school divisions do that surround us, just to help inform the board and to inform you, on how do we answer to this question? That's all. I wasn't saying we eliminate professional development days and teacher workdays. I just wanted to benchmark-
Right. And I guess all I would just say with, you know, respectfully, is I didn't begin my statement mischaracterizing anything you said. I just was saying, our teachers are crying out for PDs. I didn't mean in opposition to what you were saying.
So, I'm hearing and benchmarking and understanding what is, we're an educational institution, what are the best ways to provide appropriate professional development, so that we can have the best classrooms possible? So, okay, thank you. I know it's late. I appreciate us being kind to each other. I have, for go-backs, I have Pat, followed by Karen Kies-Gamara and Illyon so far.
Okay, so I've been listening, and it sounds to me like we could do version two, which is the later starting day. And I guess I'm motivated by that because of the- even though you look at votes in isolation for something, that is different from looking at the calendar as a whole. I understand that. But on the other hand, as a teacher, thinking about coming back so early in August is kind of challenging. So, we could do version two, swap out the half-day Wednesday for Thanksgiving for June 21st, so we're ending on a Friday. Ending on a Monday, it, to me, is a non-starter, actually. And then, the other things we've talked about, my feeling is, if we want to do Veterans Day, I've never been philosophically opposed to having Veterans Day off. I just always look at November and say, we've already got five days off in that month. And then, so to add another one, just kind of continues to chop up that quarter and that time of year. But if we want to do it, again, I'm not philosophically opposed to it, but we have to take it from somewhere. So, I think the choice is, and we just have to kind of duke this out, inauguration day for Veterans Day, if we want to do it. And then, I think for that, we just look at the data and try to see what people want. I'm not wedded either philosophically, honestly. And then, the only other thing I would say, I do agree that we should end quarter three before spring break, unless there's some reason not to, but I think that would help even out the quarters, and put that teacher workday on the Monday after spring break. I think that is a good idea. So, that's where I am.
Thank you. Karen Kies-Gamara, followed by Illyon and Chair.
Okay. I want to start by following up on Dr. Brabran's comments and Megan's comments regarding professional development. I agree, everything we have talked about requires professional development. It is not easy to get it in. We, in my opinion, have dealt with, I think, one of the hardest things a school district can deal with, with restraint and seclusion. And we have promised the community that we're going to do some work here. I don't see how else we can get it done. So, for that reason, I certainly want to hear what the other jurisdictions are doing, but I think we may be in a unique situation, because we've dealt with some very difficult things this year. I hear you, Ms. Hines, with respect to starting early. The only thing I would add, I'm actually leaning toward, I'm actually leaning toward the opposite of what you said. And the reason is, because I work with a number of jurisdictions, and a lot of them start earlier. Actual classes start earlier. And there's some- I'm very worried about kids not getting a full summer, right? We're starting in August, and then, we're letting them out late in June. I grew up with three months off in the summer, and it was completely healing, I have to say. And I think that we have such stress that I worry about cutting our summer off for our kids and our families. So, that would be the reason that I would support the other calendar. I would also say that it is a trade-off, as you pointed out. I think-
All right, Ms. Kies-Gamara, do you mind, I think I might have missed, which calendar are you supporting because of that?
The one that's draft one.
Draft one.
Mm-hmm.
Starting earlier.
Yeah, but there's something about getting, I know, I understand. It's going to be one or the other. It's June. Right. There's something, in my opinion, I could be wrong, you guys certainly, I just will express this opinion, there's something about getting to the end of that year after SOLs and all of that, and it just feels like a lot of wasted time. And so, for that reason, if families can plan, I would prefer draft version one, because you get to have that earlier time to end. So, that would be that. And the other thing is, it is a trade-off, because I think when I looked in here about families who wanted, and employees who wanted those two weeks off, the numbers were higher, significantly higher. And so, I know that we want everything. I'm not sure we can have everything. I just expressed those opinions, so I will, I'm sure that we will all, we will all be okay. We'll survive, but I just throw those concerns out there.
Thank you. Dr. Brabran.
I think I want to share one thing.
Yes.
Just because I know people have said it to me, and I just want to say it to you this way. One thing, leaving and coming back, this division gets out later than most divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I just want you to know that. Where I was, we got out late in early June, and every division surrounding where I was was out before Memorial Day. Let me just share. One thing that a lot of teachers like about coming earlier, though there's that debate, and I know you have the data there, is to be able to have as many instructional days before all the national and state assessments that we don't get to change. We don't get a window for the AP and IB. There is a small window, I think, Helen, for SOLs, right, or Dr. Drager, I mean, Mr. Drager. And we can pick the window for the state. But I know that for a lot of our kids, every, and for a lot of our teachers, every instructional day matters. And we've talked about stress for kids, trying to cram in, you know, just a day or two ago, we had the advisory committee talking about capping AP and IB. One of the issues is, and there's different ways, so you could take either version and think about it, but how do you put more of those instructional days before those assessments, so teachers don't feel the rush? But again, one of the priorities was the two-week winter break. Not every school district does that either in Virginia. So, there's a lot of competing parts, but I wanted to just talk about that instructional day piece before national and state assessments. I thought it was important, a voice to share with you all.
Thank you. No, that's helpful. It's definitely good to hear that perspective. Before I continue with go-backs, Mr. Wilson, just want to make sure, would you like to share anything, any thoughts?
Well, I guess the one thing, I'm sorry, I was talking to our presenter from the last session. You know, if, when I look at the data responses on page four, you know, there's, what stands out to me is that, in terms of the percentages of the top priorities of the people who filled out the surveys, were the top two priorities. So, that kind of forces the survey taker to say, okay, which of the two I'm going to pick? Really, the two-week winter break came out at almost 50%, 49%, and then followed by beginning one week before Labor Day, closely followed by ending in the first week of June. And I just wanted to ask staff, have we tried to look at it and come up to satisfy what the responses came up with? Is there a way to make all that happen in the calendar?
What we're seeing in the survey is start a little bit later, maintain long holiday breaks during the year, but end sooner, and it is impossible to accomplish all three of those things.
So, the reason why those, the survey participants made those three items the top twos, right, they, those were the two top, is because, you know, some people prefer, you know, those are the three most popular, but not necessarily all compatible, is what you're saying. And I guess that's where my, you know, from my perspective, this is the survey data we have, so we should try to honor what the survey participants put on here, if there's a way to do that. So, I don't know that I've reached a conclusion, but that's my thoughts at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Okay, my position between generally version one and version two has not changed. I am looking at the same data, which can be read, interpreted differently, using exactly the same data. Again, you know, even with the numbers on page number four, if you add first week in June and second week June together, that's a 47%. They want the school year to be over 47%, basically indicating to be over by second week in June. The 24 and, I'm sorry, I'm, okay, I'm sorry, 23 and 15, 38. Okay, I read that wrong. Okay, so, you could read it that way. It's all based upon survey data. Compared to upcoming school year's beginning date, that's August 26th. Coming August is August 26th, the first day. This version one is August 24th, only two-day difference. Only two-day differences, August 26th versus August 24th, two-day difference. And earlier, I was chatting with my dear colleague representing Hunter Mill District about her having to work on June 17th in another school district, when we have all-day work session. And I felt pretty bad that that particular school district is going pretty long into So, you know, between version one and version two, I think, when the survey questions went out, it's just my analysis, you know, they asked, you know, they basically tracked everything they wanted, which is not possible for us to accommodate all their desires, right? But at the end, one day is a version one and then version two, and seeing, oh, beginning date and ending date, they were more in support of version one versus version two. That's my take, looking at the numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Mr. Kofax, and I'll speak briefly before our next go-backs.
Just a quick question. You know, you can't have your cake and eat it too, and this is really what this whole survey is about, is everybody, I mean, the message is, they'd like more holidays. They don't really want to go 180 days a year, and they want, yeah, so they want to end early. If they could have 150 days, it would be great, but we don't have that flexibility.
Start late.
Yeah, and with two weeks of winter break. We- We have kind of created this by the two-week winter break, which we never had until a couple of years ago. And so one of the questions I have, I'm sorry, what?
Nothing, I'm talking myself.
Okay. So, my question is, if we, if we extend the, if we start the week before Labor Day, and part of this is because of the, I'm looking at version two. Okay. And part of it is because of when we announced we were starting before Labor Day, we did a very extensive survey, and people said one week, that's all they wanted to start. This has done that again. And I think that we have to ensure trust with the community because the community says, well, why are you taking all these holidays during the year? You could cut some of those holidays. Question I have is, is it feasible to perhaps use one of the days of the two-week holiday in December for professional development? So that you end up not two full weeks, but you still have an extensive? I've got like chattering off to the side, I'm sorry.
And she went, oh, and she went, oh.
Okay. And then if we extend the first quarter into the first week of November, that evens out our dates a bit. And then-
Sorry, Ms. Corbett Sanders, just to clarify, like, you were asking if December 21st and 22nd could be turned to teacher workdays?
Correct. If they're, not two, just one.
Okay.
Instead of a holiday?
Instead of a holiday. So like the 20-
Teachers aren't?
Yeah.
Nice.
Well, I'm trying.
They were backcariously embarrassed.
I apologize. I will try to keep us in order.
You didn't say nice. You didn't say nice.
I mean, if we could just do virtual school and not worry about the calendar, we're all done.
All right. Mr. Knack Kofax, and we will all make side comments while you speak.
Yes, you can all make side comments. I agreed with your first part, Ms. Corbett Sanders. People do want their cake and eating it too. I do think, you know, as I said, if you're filling this out, and I think, I think it is a little bit confusing in the end, you know, when you kind of rank order it, you know, people, people who are filling this out are not the decision-makers. We're the decision-makers. So we have to look at this, and we have to say, this was their blue sky in it, you know? And they don't realize, you know, you can't have the things that they want. You can't start late and early. Dr. Brabrand, very respectfully, I do feel that we do start later here because we are next to Washington DC, because Congress takes that winter break, because so many people are affiliated with the federal government, with, you know, people who work for the federal government, just so, so, so many people. So I think-
It's not that.
Yes, yeah, well, yeah, but I was trying to, I was trying to be respectful.
Respectful.
I said respectfully.
It's time to-
So, so, yeah, I think this is going to be a hard choice, but I think we have to come back to say, and you can interpret the data different ways, but, but, you know, when you do get down to it, we are just going to have to come and we're going to have to compromise, because when you get down to those, should it be Columbus Day or Inauguration Day? I mean, you're talking 40% versus 43%. It is going to be our decision. It is not statistically, it is not statistically big. The only one that is statistically big are those two weeks, and those are high percentages. Everything else is kind of-
Two weeks for winter break.
Two weeks for winter break. That was a very high percentage overall with employees and, as well as families. So we are going to have some conversations to have, and it is, but, but, yeah, I, I'm not going to repeat my preferences because I think I've said them a couple of times now. And so we're going to have to realize that some of the data's out there, we're the decision-makers, we're going to have to figure this out. And, you know, when you're, when you're putting it down, and you're like, well, yeah, I'd love to have this, it's not all going to happen, so.
Okay.
And thank you, guys, for doing your hard work. Really appreciate it, and thank you for tolerating our silliness for tonight.
Thank you. I will, I think, try to consolidate some of the, maybe not consensus, but sort of majority thoughts I'm hearing. So I did hear requests to look at version two, but doing half-day before Thanksgiving and removing June 21st. So maybe a quick thumbs up, show of hands if, okay.
What was that?
So to look at a version of, so to tweak version two, maybe let's just look at tweaks, so tweaks version two, but to do a half-day before, the ones before Thanksgiving and remove the 21st. Okay, I think, I think I've seen, okay. So that's, sounds like one tweak we'd like to look at. And then the other thing I'm hearing is looking at different possibilities for some of the holidays. So Veterans Day versus an inauguration day versus, was there another one I'm missing? I think it was, oh, Columbus Day. Sorry, that was the third one. Thank you. So I think we're, we're looking at the internal, so, Mr., sorry, what?
Just on the calendar, can you just show, say what days are Veterans Day and Columbus Day?
So I, well, Veterans Day, I think, well, we would have to decide if we want to tie it to the Monday or have it on Veterans Day, which is a rotating holiday, and on-
Wednesday.
Right, so it's the 11th, also knows my father's birthday. So in this calendar, it's November 11th, which is a Wednesday.
But, but the question is, when is the federal holiday? Federal holidays is recognized on-
Yeah, it's recognized on Wednesday, 11th. If it were on Saturday or Sunday, Saturday would be recognized, that Friday before, Sunday would recognize the Monday after.
Right, so that is one holiday that is generally recognized on the day, which is, so, sorry, you're next, so we'll be right there. So I'm just trying to hear, that was the other one. So looking at Veterans Day versus inauguration day versus Columbus Day. And I did not hear, I heard only a couple of people looking at version one. And I, were there any tweaks that I missed for version one, recommended tweaks, other than?
Yeah, the ones that I provided. On the quarter-
The quarter ends.
And January 20th for Veterans.
I think, yes, so that was for version one, January 20th, inauguration day, same thing, switched with Veterans Day. And also looking at the quarter ends. Okay. That's all I have so far. I have Dr. Brabrand and then a few other go-banks.
Just in the brainstorming for either version, though, I should have shared what administratively we would prefer, I, as superintendent, would prefer version one, but while we're on version two and you're brainstorming, you all just agreed about taking the Thanksgiving Day, making it a half-day, and you get rid of the 21st for the year-end to that Friday. That makes the teacher workday a Saturday, or we can leave it at a Monday, and in some cases, we've had teachers come in on that Saturday, if we've wanted.
It is the alternate one.
But, but just as you're talking about swapping, I just want to, to say, you know, we've done the November Election Day, and we've always paired the PD Day with the Election Day, but you could move that PD Day if you were wanting to get it for a Veterans Day. And if you wanted the teacher workday to be on a Friday, and the kids get out even on Thursday, and families just start to get away, you could get rid of inauguration day. So you could remove inauguration day as a holiday, move that teacher workday ends on a Friday now, the last day of school is a Thursday, you're getting a little, or it's still into the third week, but a little earlier, and you move the PD Day in on November 2nd to the Veterans Day, and you just have that PD Day happen on Veterans Day. Teachers would still come in, but families would be, would be home. So that's just, just another thought, as you're brainstorming the second calendar, and you don't want to have a day that's hanging with the teacher workday on a Monday, or have them come on a Saturday, just, just-
Okay, I think I'm brain-deadstorming, but I, I think I captured that. Thank you. I believe I have Elizabeth, was it Tom or Ryan who had their hand up before? No, and then Eli Young, and then Megan.
So I just, you know, some of my colleagues are asking about, you know, the, the surrounding jurisdictions. I'm looking at BDOE, and we have 133 school districts, and even in the year, so there's only about 17 schools, 17 or maybe 20 school districts that start before Labor Day, out of 133. So everybody else is starting, no, are starting after Labor Day. Everybody else is starting before Labor Day. And even in the year in 2017, when it was the earliest Labor Day possible, so it was the, you know, most, most convenient to start after Labor Day because it was September 4th, out of 133 school districts, even then, '84, still started before Labor Day. And, and significantly, I'm talking all the way back at like August 7th, August 7th, August 9th, that's when the school was starting. So my, my, I feel like, a little bit like we're wedded to how we grew up, that it's convenient to start after Labor Day, but if we make this shift, and now that we've had the governors, the, change the law in collaboration with the State General Assembly, everything else will move. We, having children go to school, I mean, my kids are already struggling, and it's the end of May. They are struggling for, for several weeks on what is it that they're focusing on? They're past SOLs, mostly, they're past APs, they're past IBs, they're past SATs, they're past everything. And so the relevance of the content, when I look at not two or three or four, but, but 70 or 80 or 90% of other school districts just in Virginia, even in the most advantageous years, are starting not days before us, but are starting weeks before us. This becomes a question of what is student-centric in terms of getting, giving them, giving them the benefit of time before standardized testing, and letting them get out when they're burned up, their bodies are burned up and their minds are burned up. So I, I would not support calendar two because of this. I don't think this is student-centric. I think it's convenient for us and not necessarily convenient for kids.
Okay. Thank you. Eli Young and then Megan, thank you for sharing that.
Okay, we still got three weeks to, when are we voting? June 13th?
June 13th.
June 10th, that's, I guess, a little more than two weeks to think about. However, I don't think I'll be prepared, I am prepared to support a version two. Most of colleges let out during the month of May, from early May. Megan?
Yeah.
I, I know, I know.
All right, let's continue, please.
And then, and then, and then, and then they go back to school sometime in August. That's what they do. There's got to be some reason for that, for colleges. I mean, going into, all the way to the end of third week, June, that is way too late. When we first began discussing about starting before Labor Day, the major reason was, the major reason was, was something Dr. Brabrand, Brabrand had stated. Testing time is a fixed, it's beyond our control. We wanted to give our students and teachers more time before our students have, would have to take those tests. When we, you know, version number two, it's August 31st, last day of August, that's the first day. I may be able to consider a compromise, I don't know whether this makes any sense or not, you know, this year, next upcoming school year, we're going to start on August 26. Whether August 26, even though that's in the middle of the week, that's, that's, could be a compromise between version and version two. And what do you do with then, from version one, that 24th and 25th, whether we could use those for the additional professional development days for teachers, you know, front-loading, something to consider. But I think that could be a compromise, but I'd have a really hard time raising my hand for version number two.
Thank you, Eli Young. I know that-
I'm sorry, I apologize. I just had one more note. The other thing is, is that camps, because of the schools getting out around the Commonwealth earlier, kids are losing opportunities to go to camps because camps are actually starting while our kids are still in school.
Okay, thank you. Just quickly regarding the, I know we discussed this in the committee, the starting the midweek, the August 26th, the same day. I can't remember what the feedback had been about why that wasn't offered, or-
Early in the committee discussions, we did have a version that considered a midweek start. We had three. We had one that was two weeks, one that was a midweek, and one that was a week before Labor Day. I know the committee really wanted to throw their weight behind the two-week start, they felt that was the version they wanted to support and recommend forward. And, you know, I don't, memory's missing at this point from six months ago, but-
But for the school system, is there any reason why?
No, no, there's no reason not to.
Okay, so that, that can be considered.
So, so, yeah, so I would just say, if that's interest, then we can, we can pull that version from the committee and circulate it among the board for board members to look at. If we did that work, Mr. Drager, you're saying we did?
Yeah, I'm sure we have something from January, February.
Then we could pull that and let you guys look at that. As you said, you have two weeks. You can still stick with one of the two versions, or you could look at this other one.
Is there interest to look at that other version?
Yeah, I want to take a look, what that may look like.
Good. Thank you. And I will have Ms. Megan, Ms. McLaughlin go. Thank you, it's your turn.
Thank you. I'm concerned because basically, when you look at the responses from both employees and families, it is a two-to-one favoring of employees to say, please do not start before one week from Labor Day. 57% versus 24%. When you go to families, it's almost a three-to-one ratio. 46% saying, do not start before one week for Labor Day, versus 18%, let's start two weeks before Labor Day. So I know that we can look at what do people say overall for versions one and two, because now you've got the whole soup mix in there. And you all can disagree, and, and maybe you want to send out a survey to your own families, but it is so blessed hot in August. It is the hottest month of the entire year. This region shuts down in August. And so I'm very worried about what we will do to our employees and our families by going with version one and starting two weeks ahead. We were already at a 50%, families didn't even want to start before Labor Day. So I'm trying to understand from my colleagues how people are ignoring the fact that people didn't even want to do it, and Ms. Schultz, I'm going to just-
Three to, it says three to, three to one, they want to get out in the first or second week of June. Three to one.
Ms. Schultz, that's, Ms. Schultz, that's because we have Labor Day starting so late that it's an unusual impact on June. But in terms of, if you look at what they want, yes, they want to get out earlier in June, but in terms of what people are saying where you start, we didn't even have a clear winner, winner when we decided to go before Labor Day. So saying that what's good for kids, having teachers and having-
Ms. McLaughlin, I'm sorry to cut off. It is 10:30. I think we were trying to hear, everyone has very different perspectives on what is here. So I think we heard your perspective, I appreciate it. I don't know that we have much more clarity tonight, so that is being taken into account. I just want to be respectful of our-
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Of our time and where we're going.
No problem.
Thank you. I'm going to let Madam Chair help us wrap up. That's the word, I can't even speak tonight.
So, thank you very much, Ms. Palchuk, and I know this has been a very challenging calendar. I'm going to suggest that Mr. Drager and Dr. Nixon provide us with the earlier version, which is a midweek. I'm also going to offer a suggestion that I sidebared with Dr. Brabrand on, which would be if we were to use version two, but front-load our professional development in that second week before, before the Labor Day start. So the students would start back the- week before, before the Labor Day start, so the students would start back the first week before Labor Day, but two weeks before, we would front-load some professional development, and then use some...
How's that different than what's up there?
I'm sorry. Okay, that's actually, what it does, I think, is it gives us three weeks of new teacher training and professional development in version two, doesn't it?
Sorry, so you would be adding additional professional development day to what's there?
So, no, what you're doing, if you're starting on the 31st, today you have two weeks of training, and so the staff come back, starting on, up there, I believe it says the 17th, and what you would do before is actually have them come back on the 10th. So that would take some of the professional de...
Okay, let's, let her finish, thank you.
I'm just throwing out an idea that gives you some flexibility, that if you do some front-loading of, and, and, and front-loading of your professional development in August, some additional front-loading, then what you can do is throughout the year, where we are taking full days off, which has been a problem for families, and do it as a half-day, you might want to consider that. But it is really late tonight at 10:35, and I would suggest that we leave this with Mr. Drager to, and Dr. Nixon, to provide us with the third version. And then what, what I think we're going to have to do is do some sidebaring amongst ourselves over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. So at, at the end, what we're asking for tonight is these two versions plus the third, and we have not given direction, other than the one tweak, we have not given direction to produce any other calendars, right? Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you all so much.
I'm sorry, I thought we did give direction to produce a third calendar, has a midweek start date.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, those three, but no more than the three.
It's not producing, it was already produced, it's providing that, that third calendar that the committee saw, but we haven't seen.
I personally have a problem with that, because we did not send that out to the community, and so I feel like we solicited information, and then we're sort of pulling the rug out from underneath them. I'm just saying, I think there's going to be blowback that we didn't provide that for their comments.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Moon, very quickly.
I mean, that's a fair point, however, I mean, there's nothing wrong for board members to see what that version looked like, and do what the board wants to do, you know?
This meeting is now adjourned.